Good morning, my name is Claudia Hernandez and I'm here to testify before you as a professional in the field of childcare liberation shelter over eight years. I'm employed as the Director of Training and Education at Southwest Key Programs in immigrant childcare shelters for unaccompanied minors. Fortunately, we have laws protecting them today, thanks to advocates who have fought for their rights to humane treatment. Southwest Key operates shelters for unaccompanied children since 1998, when Florida settlement was settled for national policy, detention centers, and treatment of children in INS custody. I implore you today to not allow state licensing to bend the rules. This policy, in order for ICE to maintain the family systems, has been found by a judge to violate the Florida settlement. As a trainer at Southwest Key Programs, it is my job to know the policies inside and out, and we ask you to review this carefully. State licensing standards are here to protect the children, and as you have created these standards and developed by parents and lawyers and doctors and other experts in the field in which the GRO is set up for, thus we look at the citizens of Texas to consider reasonable and minimum standards. But if this new ruling for families and detention standards is proposed, then the minimum standards apply for all residential childcare centers, because family detention centers do not meet these minimum standards. It flies with your mission that we are here to protect the children elderly and the people with disabilities from abuse and neglect and exploration of and involvement of clients and families and communities, to not protect ICE family detention centers from closing. This new ruling of family detention centers will not be required to comply with childcare licensing standards that set the limits for four children to one bedroom, which undermines the state licensing standard requirements for the floor space in bedrooms used for children. A bedroom with at least 60 square feet space for each occupant is more than four occupants per room are permitted even in square footage of the room that would allow accommodate more than four of them. This new rule proposes that there will be limitations keeping children from sharing rooms with adults and other limitations on keeping children from sharing bedrooms with vehicles opposite gender. As a childcare licensing administrator and in having your experience, I ask and thank you for your time really evaluate what was going to happen. Thank you.
May I remove Ms. Lucas? Ms. Lucas, we use an interpreter, so it's in Spanish.
And we're also going to do it simultaneous as opposed to her speaking and me translating to make this move along a little better.
Is there anything else I would like to say?
Hello? Everyone has talked about what the centers are like? Everybody's talked all about the centers? And it's true, I was one of the mothers that was in one of these centers. My name is Yanira from Guatemala. I came with my three children. Fifteen, thirteen, and four years old. We went through the yelera. They threw a... A bed down on the floor. I was unable to speak with my children. Like we were delinquents. The officials there said that I couldn't speak with my children. Until we got out of there, then we went through the car center. They put us in a room where there were eight people. They took food. Raw. The beans were raw. We couldn't eat it. We went without food. I then took my children because they... They hit his hand, and his hand was very inflated. The doctor that's there gets there and he says, "Nothing's wrong with him." I asked for medicine, they didn't give me any medicine. They had the time went by and they got the inflammation down with that. And I talked with someone from immigration to ask him what was it that they had told him that my son had? They called him and he said he didn't have anything. He would complain about pain. I had to cry in the room with him because I didn't have anything to give him. My middlest, my daughter. I took her to the doctor. I was hours at the doctor's office. The only thing they told me to give her was water. That sent the air. And I turned on the water faucet and with the vapor from the water, it would go away. What I did was grab napkins. Put them in the microwave. And to heat up her chest and her lungs and her... To avoid pneumonia. I didn't expect that. I came to this country because of traumatic experience. Asking help from this country. And this is the end of it, we're received. We're not criminals. And we're not harming anyone. The only reason we came here was to ask for help. Because of the difficult situation in which we find ourselves. That what we went through in our country. That's the reason that we came here to this place. With my three children. And thank God we got out. We're in a house of refuge right now. Helping all the mothers that get out of detention centers. And the same thing in Keith's country. And the same thing keeps going on. And they say, "Nobody asked you to come to this country." "Go back." You're telling your case and they say, "Just a moment." I don't need to know anything about this. "Firm a deportation or we'll take your child away from you." Sign your deportation papers or we'll take your child away from you. I can't return to my country. Because of the situation that's going on right now. And the officials of that center. And what they do is insult the mothers. And in front of the children, they tell them they're deporting? They're deporting them if they don't follow the laws that they have. And they're the ones that are going to determine whether they get deported or not. One child. We went out going to go walking along. He heard a police car. And what happens is he starts shaking. We came back and went inside the house again. Because he kept saying he didn't want to take them away. Thanks for listening to me. It's a very difficult situation. And the neat children are better taken care of than with their families and their children. Very amable. Thank you.
Hello, my name is June Segue. I'm a mass youth deputy in social work and I worked in protective services for over 35 years. As a state employee in protective services, I was charged with protecting children and families as all of you are here. I believe that it's a travesty of justice and all the family protective services stands for to change the standards for these prison-like facilities to be licensed for childcare. I noticed that there's a fiscal note that says there will be no cost to doing this. I don't see how that could be possible. These are two huge facilities and if there's no monetary cost, then certainly there will be costs and loss of resources that are badly needed to monitor other facilities. There's been a lot of testimony with which I agree here. It's difficult to add to that. One other thing I would like to say is that I've recently heard that Pennsylvania said it would not renew the license for the Burt's facility, which is the only other family detention center in the country. They have been licensing that facility for 12 years and some administrator there apparently said it will not be re-licensed because it does not meet the definition for a child care facility. I hope that Texas can take this opportunity not to go down that road and stop it here. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joanna DeLeón and I'm a legal assistant for Raisas, which is part of the promotional project that offers representation to the women in Keanan, Carr, and Dilly. I've been working for the past 14 months and visiting detention centers. I've spoken to hundreds of mothers and children that are suffering inside detention centers. No child that I've ever spoken to has called this called this detention center a good place to live. All of them call it a prison. These children are escaping violence, some of them sexual abuse, and instead of receiving help, they are putting in prison. Too many times, I've heard the story of a guard screaming to a child because he was misbehaving. I said to her, "If they don't behave, they will write them up, and that would affect their immigration case." And even though this is not true, even though this company don't have a right over their immigration case, the children get scared and they spend all of the nights crying because they're afraid that they will be deported. I talked to children who say they prefer to be dead than being in detention center. Some of them blame and shout to their mothers screaming, "Why did you make that journey? We would be better to work in your country." I've also spoken to four mothers who actually tried to commit suicide because they weren't in detention center. They feel like they have no other options. They feel like they don't have control over taking care of their kids and they can't provide a better place for their kids. Some of the children don't eat because they don't have the adequate food for them and a lot of them actually lose weight. The licensing of this facility is only allowed for the continued incarceration of these children.
My name is Melissa Biz. I hold a doctorate in anthropology with an area specialization in Latin America. For the past 18 months, I have been providing translation and other assistance to lawyers working with women and children helping family detention centers in Carr City and Dilly. Before I completed my graduate studies, I worked in the field of early childhood education for 12 years as a teacher, teacher trainer, and director of a state licensed nationally credited child development center. As a center director, it was my responsibility to make sure that our center met the standards set by the state of Texas for childcare facilities. This included ensuring a safe physical environment for both staff and children, maintaining communication with parents, and perhaps most importantly, making sure that the teachers who work with the children in our care were well-trained and prepared for their responsibilities. As the National Association for the Education of Young Children called for excellence states, to guide my decisions about practice, all early childhood teachers need to understand the developmental changes that typically occur in the years from birth through age eight and beyond, variations in development that may occur, and have best to support children's learning and development during these years. Research demonstrates that developmentally appropriate care is even more important for children who have experienced trauma, such as that experienced by the children in Keanan, Dilly, and Carr City, the trauma of violence and displacement, the trauma of detention and uncertainty. The detention centers are not able to meet these criteria. Many of the accounts I translated were written by children in these centers. These accounts included incidents in which the adults working at the detention center called them names, including Rachel Waters, threatened them or their mothers, and descriptions of food, water, and medical care being denied to them or other children in the facility. Dedicated professionals at the Texas Department of Family Protective Services work hard every day to safeguard the health and welfare of children and other vulnerable people. Please reject requests that DFPO set aside standards and allow the emergency licensing of detention facilities as childcare facilities. Thank you for your time and attention.
Good morning, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Ken Zeripis. I'm President of the Education Office and a teacher in school employment unit here for the ISP. We represent 3,000 members. I'm also a teacher after 12 years at Burnsville School in Central Austin with a highly mobile immigrant population. I have three children, 16-year-old, a 9-year-old, and a 2-year-old. My wife is a teacher and a licensed daycare or childcare provider who head her own childcare facility. I understand through teaching and licensing how important it is and high standards that are expected of childcare providers and teachers in the state. And those standards are there for a reason. It's important that we have them and we respect them. It's important that we do not go back on those standards and compromise those standards. We have to ask ourselves, is it the children that we support or is it the industrial complex, the prison industrial complex that we want to support? Detention centers are detention centers. Childcare providers are childcare providers. Teachers and childcare providers are not guards nor are guards teachers and childcare providers. It's very important, as we discuss this, to listen to what we're saying. We're talking about lowering standards for childcare. Listen to that. Lower standards for childcare. In any other context, we would laugh at that notion. Think about your own children. Think about your grandchildren. Think about the time you had to take them to a daycare or that first day you went to school and dropped your kids off. Did you not want the highest care for those children at that moment and every minute that your child or your grandchild is in that room and in that facility? Do you not want the highest qualified person to deal with your child or your grandchildren? And if the answer to that is yes, then the answer must be yes for everybody else. We cannot lower standards. It's appalling that we're even considering the notion of lowering standards for children in childcare. It doesn't matter how we feel about immigration, immigration reform and the issues, political issues that surround that. This discussion is about children and the care that we provide for children. We brag about this great country, yet we treat children and their families like this. And we've heard countless examples of appalling conditions. It seems to me that this... that we have plenty of work to do right now on improving the conditions that these children and these families are existing in at this moment. Without reducing standards, they could undermine an already problematic system. Who are we? Who do we care about? What are our priorities? Are we supported by prisons or are we supported by the children?
Oh, sir, you're ready?
Good afternoon. Thank you for taking the time to listen to what we have to say. I am here to testify against detention centers having a childcare license. I am a national board certified teacher and I am vice president for certified employees with educational training. I taught early childhood for eight years and have worked with many immigrant families as a transition to public schools. Let's be clear. A childcare is a place where children can be cared for to ensure that they are learning basic social, cognitive, and language skills. They are happy places that can help children grow and flourish. People that work at childcare centers have to get many certifications and the places have to get certified to have many... so they can meet many requirements to ensure that children are safe. Detention centers are not. They are inadequate staff, they don't have the proper resources, and the workers don't have the proper professional development to deal with young children. The families have already suffered too much. Too much pain is in their heart and their souls already. Let's not make this more hurtful for them. We are in the 21st century and we should respect all people, especially children. Children, it doesn't matter where they're from, if they have papers or if they're not. We should care for them because they're the future of our country and the world. So please, let's not give these licenses to the detention centers. Thank you.
Good morning or afternoon, whatever it is right now. I thank you for the sacred trust that you have undertaken and what everyone here hopes and prays for is that you will make a decision in keeping with the golden rule that will allow you to lay your head down on your pillow at night and sleep with a clear conscience. I am the Executive Director of our Texas Unitarian Universalist Justice Ministry representing 33 congregations and over 5,000 Unitarian Universalists. This morning, I'm going to read a statement from the Unitarian Universal Service Committee who is one of our national and international partners in justice. "The Unitarian Universal Service Committee strongly objects to the state of Texas issuing childcare licenses to immigration and custom enforcement immigrant family detention centers. For your consideration, we are submitting a longer statement documenting our objection to granting the licenses along with our recent professional mental health study assessing the impact of the center's policies, practices, and personnel on detained mothers and children, and the letter signed by 31 national mental health care experts opposing such licensure as further evidence. The purpose of the family detention centers at Carr City and Dilly has been to hold families in custody while they undergo immigration and asylum proceedings. Guards and other detention personnel have a specific role to play with specific competencies and requirements. Their training, temperament, and policies are antithetical to those of childcare professionals. In fact, our research documents abuses and human rights violations families face in these facilities. These cannot be remedied by the proposed rule. The provision that exceptions in the proposed rule make it clear that this change in the state of Texas childcare regulations is not well thought out but is rather a last-minute attempt to make the detention center conform to the Florida agreement. This tries to legitimize the detention of children when federal courts have deemed it unacceptable. We urge you not to issue any childcare licenses to ICE family detention centers and to abandon the proposed rule of change. Thank you. And I have the documents here to enter into the records.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Alyssa Underwood Mark. I'm an attorney, a graduate student in UT's Department of American Studies focusing on incarceration and food, and I'm also a parent. I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposed rules. The licensing of immigration prisons as childcare facilities is not in the best interest of children but rather would perpetuate violence, neglect, and abuse against them. As others have commented today, the prison-like conditions of these facilities, including unhealthy food, inadequate medical care, and unsafe living spaces, are causing further physical and emotional trauma for families and children who are escaping dangerous conditions in their home countries only to face similar injustices here. As a mother, I can only imagine the great sense of loss that comes with the state taking away your right to care for your children simply because you tried to leave a dangerous situation and bring your kids to safety. You have heard detailed testimony about the inhumane conditions in these facilities. I urge the agency to investigate claims of abuse and of large prisons burdening its responsibilities and causing further irreparable harm to families and children by licensing prisons as childcare facilities. Thank you.
Everyone, turn into position.
Good afternoon, I'm Anna Gonzalez with Workers Defense Project and I'll be interviewing Lucy Nadas.
My name is Irma Hernandez. I'm a member of the Project Defense Network. I'm here as a mom of three daughters who are going to pass through a detention center in Texas. They are moving into the violence in my family and are looking for the best way for their children. I'm here to ask the Department of Protection and Services to help the families in Texas to move to a detention center. I want a license to operate as a guardian. I ask this in the name of my daughter and her son.
My name is Irma Hernandez and I am a member of Workers Defense Project. I'm here as a mother of three daughters, one of whom was just released from a detention center in Dilly, Texas. She came to the US fleeing the violence in her country and looking for a better life for her five-year-old son. I'm here to ask the Department of Family Protective Services not to allow family detention centers to be licensed childcare facilities. I ask this on behalf of my daughter and her son, and I would like to show you.
My daughter and granddaughter got into this country and were arrested by immigration that day. When they were arrested, they were first taken to a place known as a cooler for almost two days. During this time, my daughter gave any food she... any food was given to her son. The hole wasn't there. After this, we were taken to a place called the Doghouse. They call it that because you literally sleep in cages. Finally, my daughter and grandson were taken to a detention center in Dilly, Texas, where they were prisoners for twenty-eight days. I say prisoners because that's what that place is. It's a prison where they tell you when to wake up, eat, and sleep. The prisons where my nephew was, they were not allowed to go to. They were arrested by immigration that day. When they were arrested, they were first taken to a place known as a cooler for almost two days. During this time, my daughter gave any food she, any food was given to her son. The hole wasn't there. After this, we were taken to a place called the Doghouse. They call it that because you literally sleep in cages. Finally, my daughter and grandson were taken to a detention center in Dilly, Texas, where they were prisoners for twenty-eight days. I say prisoners because that's what that place is. It's a prison where they tell you when to wake up, eat, and sleep. The prisons where my nephew was, they were not allowed to go to. They were arrested by immigration that day. When they were arrested, they were first taken to a place known as a cooler for almost two days. During this time, my daughter gave any food she, any food was given to her son. The hole wasn't there. After this, we were taken to a place called the Doghouse. They call it that because you literally sleep in cages. Finally, my daughter and grandson were taken to a detention center in Dilly, Texas, where they were prisoners for twenty-eight days. I say prisoners because that's what that place is. It's a prison where they tell you when to wake up, eat, and sleep. The prisons where my nephew was, they were not allowed to go to. They were arrested by immigration that day. When they were arrested, they were first taken to a place known as a cooler for almost two days. During this time, my daughter gave any food she, any food was given to her son. The hole wasn't there. After this, we were taken to a place called the Doghouse. They call it that because you literally sleep in cages. Finally, my daughter and grandson were taken to a detention center in Dilly, Texas, where they were prisoners for twenty-eight days. I say prisoners because that's what that place is. It's a prison where they tell you when to wake up, eat, and sleep. The prisons where my nephew was, they were not allowed to go to. They were arrested by immigration that day. When they were arrested, they were first taken to a place known as a cooler for almost two days. During this time, my daughter gave any food she, any food was given to her son. The hole wasn't there. After this, we were taken to a place called the Doghouse. They call it that because you literally sleep in cages. Finally, my daughter and grandson were taken to a detention center in Dilly, Texas, where they were prisoners for twenty-eight days. I say prisoners because that's what that place is. It's a prison where they tell you when to wake up, eat, and sleep. The prisons where my nephew was, they were not allowed to go to. They were arrested by immigration that day. When they were arrested, they were first taken to a place known as a cooler for almost two days. During this time, my daughter gave any food she, any food was given to her son. The hole wasn't there. After this, we were taken to a place called the Doghouse. They call it that because you literally sleep in cages. Finally, my daughter and grandson were taken to a detention center in Dilly, Texas, where they were prisoners for twenty-eight days. I say prisoners because that's what that place is. It's a prison where they tell you when to wake up, eat, and sleep. The prisons where my nephew was, they were not allowed to go to. They were arrested by immigration that day. When they were arrested, they were first taken to a place known as a cooler for almost two days. During this time, my daughter gave any food she, any food was given to her son. The hole wasn't there. After this, we were taken to a place called the Doghouse. They call it that because you literally sleep in cages. Finally, my daughter and grandson were taken to a detention center in Dilly, Texas, where they were prisoners for twenty-eight days. I say prisoners because that's what that place is. It's a prison where they tell you when to wake up, eat, and sleep. The prisons where my nephew was, they were not allowed to go to. They were arrested by immigration that day. When they were arrested, they were first taken to a place known as a cooler for almost two days. During this time, my daughter gave any food she, any food was given to her son. The hole wasn't there. After this, we were taken to a place called the Doghouse. They call it that because you literally sleep in cages. Finally, my daughter and grandson were taken to a detention center in Dilly, Texas, where they were prisoners for twenty-eight days. I say prisoners because that's what that place is. It's a prison where they tell you when to wake up, eat, and sleep. The prisons where my nephew was, they were not allowed to go to. They were arrested by immigration that day. When they were arrested, they were first taken to a place known as a cooler for almost two days. During this time, my daughter gave any food she, any food was given to her son. The hole wasn't there. After this, we were taken to a place called the Doghouse. They call it that because you literally sleep in cages. Finally, my daughter and grandson were taken to a detention center in Dilly, Texas, where they were prisoners for twenty-eight days. I say prisoners because that's what that place is. It's a prison where they tell you when to wake up, eat, and sleep. The prisons where my nephew was, they were not allowed to go to. They were arrested by immigration that day. When they were arrested, they were first taken to a place known as a cooler for almost two days. During this time, my daughter gave any food she, any food was given to her son. The hole wasn't there. After this, we were taken to a place called the Doghouse. They call it that because you literally sleep in cages. Finally, my daughter and grandson were taken to a detention center in Dilly, Texas, where they were prisoners for twenty-eight days. I say prisoners because that's what that place is. It's a prison where they tell you when to wake up, eat, and sleep. The prisons where my nephew was, they were not allowed to go to. They were arrested by immigration that day. When they were arrested, they were first taken to a place known as a cooler for almost two days. During this time, my daughter gave any food she, any food was given to her son. The hole wasn't there. After this, we were taken to a place called the Doghouse. They call it that because you literally sleep in cages. Finally, my daughter and grandson were taken to a detention center in Dilly, Texas, where they were prisoners for twenty-eight days. I say prisoners because that's what that place is. It's a prison where they tell you when to wake up, eat, and sleep. The prisons where my nephew was, they were not allowed to go to. They were arrested by immigration that day. When they were arrested, they were first taken to a place known as a cooler for almost two days. During this time, my daughter gave any food she, any food was given to her son. The hole wasn't there. After this, we were taken to a place called the Doghouse. They call it that because you literally sleep in cages. Finally, my daughter and grandson were taken to a detention center in Dilly, Texas, where they were prisoners for twenty-eight days. I say prisoners because that's what that place is. It's a prison where they tell you when to wake up, eat, and sleep. The prisons where my nephew was, they were not allowed to go to. They were arrested by immigration that day. When they were arrested, they were first taken to a place known as a cooler for almost two days. During this time, my daughter gave any food she, any food was given to her son. The hole wasn't there. After this, we were taken to a place called the Doghouse. They call it that because you literally sleep in cages. Finally, my daughter and grandson were taken to a detention center in Dilly, Texas, where they were prisoners for twenty-eight days. I say prisoners because that's what that place is. It's a prison where they tell you when to wake up, eat, and sleep. The prisons where my nephew was, they were not allowed to go to. They were arrested by immigration that day. When they were arrested, they were first taken to a place known as a cooler for almost two days. During this time, my daughter gave any food she, any food was given to her son. The hole wasn't there. After this, we were taken to a place called the Doghouse. They call it that because you literally sleep in cages. Finally, my daughter and grandson were taken to a detention center in Dilly, Texas, where they were prisoners for twenty-eight days. I say prisoners because that's what that place is. It's a prison where they tell you when to wake up, eat, and sleep. The prisons where my nephew was, they were not allowed to go to. They were arrested by immigration that day. When they were arrested, they were first taken to a place known as a cooler for almost two days. During this time, my daughter gave any food she, any food was given to her son. The hole wasn't there. After this, we were taken to a place called the Doghouse. They call it that because you literally sleep in cages. Finally, my daughter and grandson were taken to a detention center in Dilly, Texas, where they were prisoners for twenty-eight days. I say prisoners because that's what that place is. It's a prison where they tell you when to wake up, eat, and sleep. The prisons where my nephew was, they were not allowed to go to. They were arrested by immigration that day. When they were arrested, they were first taken to a place known as a cooler for almost two days. During this time, my daughter gave any food she, any food was given to her son. The hole wasn't there. After this, we were taken to a place called the Doghouse. They call it that because you literally sleep in cages. Finally, my daughter and grandson were taken to a detention center in Dilly, Texas, where they were prisoners for twenty-eight days. I say prisoners because that's what that place is. It's a prison where they tell you when to wake up, eat, and sleep. The prisons where my nephew was, they were not allowed to go to. They were arrested by immigration that day. When they were arrested, they were first taken to a place known as a cooler for almost two days. During this time, my daughter gave any food she, any food was given to her son. The hole wasn't there. After this, we were taken to a place called the Doghouse. They call it that because you literally sleep in cages. Finally, my daughter and grandson were taken to a detention center in Dilly, Texas, where they were prisoners for twenty-eight days. I say prisoners because that's what that place is. It's a prison where they tell you when to wake up, eat, and sleep. The prisons where my nephew was, they were not allowed to go to. They were arrested by immigration that day. When they were arrested, they were first taken to a place known as a cooler for almost two days. During this time, my daughter gave any food she, any food was given to her son. The hole wasn't there. After this, we were taken to a place called the Doghouse. They call it that because you literally sleep in cages. Finally, my daughter and grandson were taken to a detention center in Dilly, Texas, where they were prisoners for twenty-eight days. I say prisoners because that's what that place is. It's a prison where they tell you when to wake up, eat, and sleep. The prisons where my nephew was, they were not allowed to go to. They were arrested by immigration that day. When they were arrested, they were first taken to a place known as a cooler for almost two days. During this time, my daughter gave any food she, any food was given to her son. The hole wasn't there. After this, we were taken to a place called the Doghouse. They call it that because you literally sleep in cages. Finally, my daughter and grandson were taken to a detention center in Dilly, Texas, where they were prisoners for twenty-eight days. I say prisoners because that's what that place is. It's a prison where they tell you when to wake up, eat, and sleep. The prisons where my nephew was, they were not allowed to go to. They were arrested by immigration that day. When they were arrested, they were first taken to a place known as a cooler for almost two days. During this time, my daughter gave any food she, any food was given to her son. The hole wasn't there. After this, we were taken to a place called the Doghouse. They call it that because you literally sleep in cages.[800.12]
It has not degraded. As a mother, I know, because I'm an Athena mother, how we will stick with our kids through thick and thin. We will keep our children with us. And that is why these mothers have come across a continent to protect their children. Are we going to diminish that sentiment, that feeling, that potential that they're looking for by lowering the standards here where they have come seeking refuge? This is a wrong policy. Would you take your child to one of these places as a childcare facility? Would you want your sister and her children to be there? Be logical. Put yourself in that place. It is wrong to license a prison as a childcare facility. I have to be that doers. In fact, you should be raising a voice against the detention of these women and children in these places. Knowing all the testimony from all these people, all these wonderful people with all their licenses and research. Your base should be there too, advocating for the closure of these places because they are the term of health. They are wrong for the children, wrong for these mothers. Your voice should be against this, not for or licensing it. Thank you for your integrity.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Culver, and I hope to communicate one thing to you in this short talk, and that is the total lack of accountability and an apparent institutional commitment to arbitrarious indifference that rules the day at these ICE private detention centers. I'm not a childcare professional, social worker therapist, I'm not a good immigration lawyer, but I am married to an immigration lawyer and a good drive. And I've spent many hours at the CARNES and other private detention facilities here in Texas. And as a lawyer for the past 38 years, I really thought I'd seen it all. But the pettiness, the attitude, the rules, the change from day to day, from person to person, it's unbelievable. It is really unbelievable. And at the beginning, I was so outraged, I was like, well, this can't be. There's no way. Hearing about people who were denied access because one time they filled out a form as an interpreter and then corrected it as a paralegal and was permanently barred from coming in as a paralegal. One instance where a paralegal, my wife, was not permitted to come in because when he sent the fax in, or she did, 24 hours in advance, as was required, it said the week that he would be visited. And when he traveled to the facility, it was not, it was told he could not come in because that letter did not say the specific date and time he would be there. It took me getting on the phone, tracking down the general counsel for the private company that owned the facility, saying this is the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. And then this person, this counsel, saying, well, here's the warden's cell phone number. You call them up and tell them I said it was okay. This is the kind of institution that we have here. Now, add to that that when you see these arbitrary rule changes, you're dealing with people who are administering them with a complete law enforcement mentality. The idea, I can't say that I've ever seen the childcare facility or what goes on, but I can tell you that at every other level, it's amazing. And to think that a government can have such a type of situation is really difficult to believe. Adding in the fact that children are there, it's really astounding. I would invite any of you to go down there one day to CARNES. Been there many times. Just don't say you're coming, and don't say who you are. And say, I would like to visit so-and-so person and see what kind of reception you get. And then you might go back two days later and find out that all the things you were told the first time had completely changed with no notice, no writing. That's what I see, and I just wanted to relay that. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Selena Loreno, and I'm attorney with the Mexican-American Legal Defense and Educational Fund. Maldif is here in strong opposition to the proposed rule. You've heard feelings expressed of confusion, and we too are baffled. And that's because this proposed rule stands at odds with the 1997 Flores Settlement Agreement, with federal case law, and with DFPS's commission. The federal immigration detention centers at CARNES and DILY are not established nor designed to provide childcare. But instead, they're meant to secure the custody of detainees in order to execute federal immigration law. To date, DHS and other federal agencies have received numerous complaints regarding the lack of safe and developmentally appropriate childcare appropriate conditions for children at CARNES. And these have included basic access to medical, dental, and healthcare services, continued care for pre-diagnosed medical conditions, basic nutrition, age-accompanied educational services, and basic developmental needs such as diapers, cribs, and space and time for crawling and physical activity. Neither CARNES nor DILY has private changing areas for women and children held there, or restrictions on interaction between children based on gender or age. And there have been a number of allegations of assault and sexual abuse and potential sexual abuse because of these lack of age and gender restrictions between detainees of the facilities and a lack of proper training and supervision for facility staff. Maldif and our allies filed two federal complaints to that effect. In addition, the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights, after an extensive investigation, after hearing voluminous testimony from Maldif and others, and after onsite visits, found that DHS and its contractors are not holding children in conditions that are the least restrictive setting in accordance with Flores. The commission concluded that ICE is not complying with the Prison Rape Elimination Act's solitary confinement practices concerning children, and has not adequately addressed staff misconduct regarding sexual assault and abuse. The commission also found that CARNES has failed to comply with federal standards for medical care, including ignoring serious medical conditions and failing to administer proper medical protocols. These reports evidence the need for heightened accountability, not a decrease in the standards for children as proposed in the regulations for licensing. If DFPS truly seeks to hold family detention centers accountable for the safety, health, and well-being of children, it could respond to the multiple requests for investigation and investigate and inspect these facilities. And instead, we're here today with this rule that seeks to license and provide the state's seal of approval on facilities that are fundamentally and irreversibly flawed and unsuitable for children. And we implore you to abandon the proposed rule today. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. I think it's the afternoon. My name is Yvette Mendez. I am currently a graduate student at the University of Texas Central Indian School of Policy. I've also been a school teacher, a licensed school teacher for the state of Texas. And I'm part of an organization called the Indigenous Women's Network in the Department of Defense. But today, I come to you as a mother. I come to appeal to the hearts and minds of each and every one of you that's here today as human beings, that common bond that unites us as civilized people. And I wonder, as I stand here and see all these amazing people who have come here with their expertise, with their professionalism, and I wonder, why are we even here having this kind of a conversation? Why is it even a question whether or not it's proper to have children incarcerated and to license such a facility as a childcare facility? I find it disturbing, and I find it very sad that here we are in the new year 2015, as supposedly one of the world's most powerful nations. We are supposed to be civilized human beings. And yet, here we are trying to have a discussion as to whether or not we should license a prison system to have children. These very children who have parents just like each and every one of you, perhaps you also are grandparents. And I ask you, what kind of a world do we live in today when we have to come to a bureaucracy as this to try to decide over the lives of small children and women? I think it is embarrassing. I think it is appalling, and I think it is shameful that we even have to sit in an institution like this, most of us college graduates, to try to rationalize in our mind and determine whether this is right or wrong. What kind of a civilization have we become when we cannot even figure that out as common sense? And I ask you, and I implore you to your common humanity as human beings, that you make the right choice, that you make the right decision, and that you not take the human out of the Texas Department of Human Services. Thank you.
Robert Painter? Good afternoon. My name is Robert Painter. I'm attorney and director for loan services at American Gateways. I'm here today to voice our opposition to the proposed rule. American Gateways is a central Texas nonprofit dedicated to providing immigration legal services for women and immigrants in our community. We've been a part of this community for almost 30 years now. We currently operate in four immigration detention facilities throughout the region, including the CARNES and DILY facilities in question today. We provide needlework education programs, pro-state workshops, and pro-loan representation of those facilities. Our staff attorneys are on the ground meeting with families several days to leave for hours at a time. I have personally given these presentations and workshops, and we all know it's a state here. You have heard and will hear the merrier example of why family detention and childcare present a contradiction in terms. Beyond these specific concerns, we wish to remind this panel that the vast majority of these families are asylum seekers, refugees. I mean that they suffer significant trauma in their home countries and in transit to the United States, talking about rapes, feeds, witnessing a murder of family members, torture. It's well understood among immigration practitioners and many people that the detention conditions only serve to exacerbate the psychological damage that these families have suffered. The fundamental question here is whether it's sound policy or morally right that the children in question are being locked into a climate of pervasive tension, uncertainty, and fear. At least, they absolutely not. Our position remains that family detention stands in direct opposition to child welfare and we strongly oppose the licensing of these facilities. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Orietta Escra, sent from... I brought my blue Santa hat for the cops Friday. I've been to Tijuana, and it saddened me too. It makes me cry for all this. I didn't even know that there were having cases in detention centers that have not done anything. You know, no crime, innocent children, our future children, who maybe one day be sitting right there where you are. And hopefully, the New York kids are in their possessions. You know, your grandkids or whatever, nephews and sisters or whatever, any family members. Because they will see what they've been through. I don't think it's like what y'all are doing. I know there's a lot of people out here that would love to take these kids, especially me. You know, I would love to take all these kids. Because God said, "Come to me." You know, and I will, I would take some of these kids if you would give up to me. It hurts me enough that I know that y'all have the power to hear us out. And then, it doesn't really matter what we think or say. In your hearts, you could have a warm heart that God gave you or a cold heart, like the yin-yang, good or bad. We suffer so much. My people suffer so much, like Hitler's time. Is that what y'all want to do to our children? You want to bring that back again? We don't want that. Please be a good people, the way God wants us. This is a country of the free, but I don't see it free. I never had. People who want to come over to make a better life for themselves. Everybody's told you all this already, but y'all still don't want to give it to them. So I don't see no land of the free here. Can you show me that land of free? Where is it at? Where's this promised land at? We celebrate Christmas. Jesus Christ. Was he from here? We are from here. We are, there's no borders in this world. The Creator didn't put any borders. He walked the land.
Yes, sir. I guess if you'd like to include your march.
Please, y'all do the right thing. These children are suffering. They're suffering. And if y'all gonna make a detention, they cares, could please provide the good health and good food. You know, take care of them better the way you would like to be taken care of. We often get old.
Thank you, Mr. Lord, for your time.
Please.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next speaker.
Don't license these things. Only if you're gonna make a better for the people in there. Thank you.
I believe I'm next. Name's Alfred Adios.
Yes, sir. Good for that.
I'm the spokesperson for Texas to the Wisconsin. And we had an effort of three years of going to territories confronting CCAs, TICAN, and other, always the very same conditions. And in 2010 or 2009, nearing 2010, those children were removed and said that they would no longer be served for their families, and they were sent to Burks, uh, Burks, Burks Presidio. And now we're hearing that Burks is no longer being licensed for childcare. And yet, now here in Texas, your family, your family services, is considering, or actually, y'all have already licensed one. And now you want to do it at large for all facilities, all these private prisons. We've heard all the inhumane conditions that people are through, and people that have come with all sorts of trauma. Children psychologically traumatized already, and then arriving and being traumatized still further. We used to petition y'all to come and help us when we were protesting against TICAN. And y'all said it was not legal jurisdiction. Well, now somehow it's going to be. Y'all are making a decision to license these facilities. And I strongly, strongly oppose this as an advocate for human rights. We, indigenous people of Texas, and throughout this continent, have been deported, displaced, removed since the arrival of the Europeans on our land. So I have this vantage point, this viewpoint of inhumane treatment from one thing to another. Y'all in this commission should not license, should revoke the own license that y'all have already given out to that facility because they are not childcare centers. They're not, they're prisons. Play me a song. They are prisons for profit. This private industry has grown legs and is getting stronger and stronger and gaining more and more monetary power. And yes, money talks, and everything else is lost. But please make the right decision. Do not license these facilities. Thank you very much.
We can move on to something very important. So we'll take another short break. Take a quarter change to stretch your fingers, and we'll be in about half a minute.